Start us off. Yeah. In that.
No, we're good.
I'd like to stay under that range.
You're allowed to do that, actually.
I know.
We can find this, next saving in budgets. Okay, we're down to two, which is the special of this year twenty two point four budget. Normally for this budget workshop, they turn it over to the city manager. Let them take us through the end of the staff as a corporation for a particular section. Let that take us through the little bit of how we end the last current or plan to end the purpose of the earth. And then what we see going forward in the next sphere, but that's just in the highlight and that we can't. You know, any challenges received by industry, this is the key decision points. Does everybody have some of them on the level from the season? Okay, that's just the rest of the class.
Yeah, we just got back today.
A budget that they got thirty thousand, that's asked for forty five. And we can talk about that now.
So we're looking really good for the current fiscal year. About two hundred fifty thousand revenue over expense. A lot of that is due to, yeah, we budget very perfectly with directly the state share of revenue. Because we don't know when they're going to switch the formula on us and pull that rug out. And then the grand three trail factor is, yeah, most of it can be done in the next couple of years. So for not including the various of those funds. Just for this fiscal year, I mean, you know, that care for the D A P costs, what is substantially. The trajectory goes substantially over the next couple of years. I mean, you know, fires directly go up by a lot. Take going from about fifteen percent of our revenues last year to about twenty, about twenty percent in next fiscal year.
Of our expenditure, I think?
Of, 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 of revenues.
Using that.
Yeah, yeah. So kind of good going into, yeah, I have a list of, a list of what we, we did this year. Like a read through everything. I know what you want to do. So for next fiscal year. Throw fun knowledge is projected to bring in an additional one hundred twenty eight thousand. Because property values go up by five percent of rate of inflation, Trevor's left this year inflation was more than nine percent. So it's five percent.
So are we, are we going to see additional revenues or are we? And we're not heavily funded yet.
We're not heavily funded yet.
Well, I learned something this morning, actually, about heavily. Um, the rollback this year is one, so there is no rollback than heavily. And the reason being is because the way the formula works with the capping at five percent and then they should be set on twenty nine or whatever plus. And he ended up with a temper all across Washington. One. So nobody has a rollback this year.
Right?
So we don't have a rollback even if we're not doing that.
But I mean, I imagine we won't continue to see us creep closer and closer to.
I was just asking, is that something? Is that, that's a budget or something that shows where heavily right now is right now or what it appears to be?
It's on the L forty twenty nine.
That's the form we have got. She could provide that, who wants?
Yeah, we, 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 we do have. Okay, so it's, yeah. It, it, it's been in the final budget document, you remember?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, four, we're not the end of what we have to love.
Yeah.
I, I think I do it for a total though, not yet. For a total and not for the tax as second. But I don't think I break it out. I do break it out.
Certainly. No, no, you're fine. We're direct to the state lab and state revenue sharing. We do know that the, I think, the last year was the last year of the current state shared. Local community stabilization reimbursement. So they, they could change that formula anytime they wanted to. And we, we benefited greatly from the current formula of revenue sharing.
When I spoke to, I spoke to, um, Jay Charles, he's the head of the stabilization, the local community. Stabilization group, and he told me that he was talking to people there and they actually have more money to try to even last year. But he was not sure on their way to get it up. As usual, it's definitely silence from the state on the other ones.
But, you know, those are two biggest sources of revenue. Property taxes and, and state share revenue. So changes to, to either of those items, you know, some substantial changes are, are over revenue. On page four. You know, investment gain is, is, you know, relatively nominal. The D A didn't indicate that they're going to start taking on more. Of the contribution towards maintenance that the city, you know, has traditionally taken on, on behalf of the D A. So I think we will, we will start benefiting from the D A's success. In our, in the general fund budget.
I have a question about that. How much, like, are you able to estimate how much the city is subsidizing the D A? I mean, the D A were actually paying for everything it's supposed to be, if there, if that's meant to try and.
Yeah, so. Well, not, not necessarily. So, I mean, there, there, there's a lot of things that the D A could contribute to. But, so I think, you know, the D A could contribute towards police and, or right now, we, we don't have that factor then. They could contribute towards road maintenance. That's not built into the general climate, but, uh, you know. So there's a, there's a downtown maintenance department that typically the D A has not. Contributed as much as that department spends. It, it, it has been the lowest recently.
I think, I think two or three years ago, we, we asked. Courtney to do a, as best she could, an accounting. Of the maintenance time that, within the district area. But I'm not quite sure it's. If you're saying it's not one hundred percent tracked by area.
It is not.
So there's, there's some estimate that goes on, like, you know, there are limbs. That's long, that's been on the road. As opposed to the third street outside of this there. Very, okay, I don't say they spent twenty seven minutes on the best thing on the road and the rest outside of the D A. But quite a bit of her body is broke down. On parks, right? Downtown, snowballing.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so, so, so the, the D W time is simply broken down into. Parks, uh, D B W, um, downtown D W, uh, roads. Uh, trees.
Wouldn't, so I, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying. Better, but it, Eric's.
Not getting on, but what I'm saying is, I mean, that's living for when.
The first year I got on the D A in two thousand eighty four. The D A was paying a chunk of money, I'm gonna say it was forty thousand dollars. And when the economy get hard and the D A's revenues became strapped, it can affect the value. We allowed them only to pay like five or ten for a long, long time. And it became, it was so long that when we asked them to go back up. One of the questions that was asked by, for newer members of the board, hadn't even remember being there at the forty. They asked for some type of justification of the number, and that's my number. Either radio or some combination radio cord to put that together. My friend with D A, so it has been done in these years. I don't know if there's an act of status, but, but just, just to hit on something that is important. You know, a lot of the growth is, is planned. In our town will be within the D A district. And the, the city is only going to benefit revenue wise up to the, the base property here nineteen ninety four or whatever. So, you know. As we go forward, I think that there should be an ask. From the city to the D A for contributions back towards police. Fire because of the coverage area that's covered. Now, I think that's today necessarily, but I think, I think that there's other projects come online, I think that is fair. And, and when you get up against. Everything. You know, if we do become strapped, we're, we're gonna have to ask for a rollback. We're, we'll have to go to the voters and just ask them to reset it at twelve and a half. And there's always so many options available within the, the way that government finance works. You know, if our D A is, I don't wanna say rich enough, but, you know. Their revenues are only five hundred thousand round figures right now. And they still have bond payments to make and that type of thing. But if they ever get off one of those bond payments. And start realizing some of the benefits of some of these things that are potentially online. They could make contributions to offset police and fire for sure. Assuming we maintain a good relationship with them and we're not disagreeing, well, that happens too, I mean.
So, um, I'm trying to think of the change number. I'll build up that first and then I'll come back around to the maintenance. So in twenty twenty five, twenty six. The, the thirty four, thirty forty five Broad Street, um, the other fires won't be there.
The Jeffers will be done.
Jeffers will be done, so before twenty thirty. D A's projects will be done. Unless they have, in this strategic planning process that they're going to go through. Identify new projects for how they're going to continue to reinvest in the downtown. Unless they were to do that. The D A would end. And it would, the city would be doing everything the D A does if they wanted to continue to maintain this downtown. That understood for everyone how that works? The D A can only exist and capture money when it identifies how it's gonna spend that money. It can't just be an entity that collects money and just pays out something here and there for whatever different things you identify. There has to be a legal reason for them to operate, and that's where the projects and the investment comes back.
The taxable is maybe thirty two. Okay, and our tax was maybe twenty eight, you were thinking of.
Yes, so. If they had no more projects, if they decided, if they, um, say, say, they have a D A. Twenty thirty two would work, maybe, for that. Don't see that happening, that's not something that's ever been. Rather discussed, so it's, it's your mechanism for making sure you continually investing in the downtown. So now circling back to the maintenance. Seventy thousand was budgeted for this year. It's my understanding that there's actually been ninety six thousand in maintenance in the downtown that's come in. The D A is aware that. More is, it, it, there is more than what was budgeted. They are, they're willing to take, pay that gap, it's twenty seven thousand dollars to make up that difference. I just take it back to them, uh, when we do the review in that. They have budgeted one hundred thousand for next year. And are committed that if it actually comes in more than that for the maintenance in downtown, they will do a budget. So they're, they're, at this point, they're willing to take. Back. Take their responsibility back because they are becoming healthier. So they, they are aware of that. I hope, does that help?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think I would just, I would hope that minimally they're paying for what? The services that they're using, the city services, I guess. How much of what they're budgeting is going towards just repaying the bond room thirty forty five for our properties? Is there a percentage, I mean?
Commissioner, uh, for five to twenty four, a hundred and four thousand. Which roughly that until twenty twenty nine, and it bulges like two hundred and fifty.
So at that point, it's like fifty percent of their revenues or?
They lost, they lost the budget.
I'm just starting like, so we talked about how as long as they have projects that they're investing in that kind of thing. So I'm just, I'm not figuring what project they're investing in besides. Purchasing a piece of property that they're now significant debt to that it seems like we might be. Giving away, so even though I know there was not an option.
They have, they have not. Since the great recession, they have not taken on any significant projects as it's currently lined out in their strategic plan. Because they didn't have that funding, they were, they were putting all of their revenues on the chunk of them. Into making sure they read those bond payments. That was the number one thing that they.
And the bond was for the purchase of thirty forty five broad.
There's.
And that's, that's all, that's all about. Their, their, their revenue, the tax back revenue that they, they got in the current fiscal year. It is roughly six hundred and ninety thousand dollars. There's three hundred and twelve thousand. Budgeted for bond payments. There's seventy eight thousand that was budgeted. The one hundred fifty three thousand is budgeted related to the D T E substation move and swap and property swap, which is payback. Payback to D T E and payback to us. So. That's almost seventy five percent of the money. Seventy thousand is city maintenance. And then there's, you know, professional services allowance of fifty thousand, thirty three back for city administrative costs. So I, I would answer the question. Forty five percent or fifty percent is going to bond payments, almost, not quite. Something. Twenty five percent was, was related, was, this past year was related to the D T E substation payback that they had to deal with. Of the remaining hundred fifty thousand dollars, a hundred of it comes back to the city in the form of the city maintenance and the city administrative cost. Then there's miscellaneous changes on that, that I know that relates to, you know, professional services, like, every now and then we need the attorney or the planner or. Auditor. That would be a separate line, I'll fly in, but you understand what I'm saying?
Right.
Does that help?
Yes, yeah, and I know we're here to talk about our budget and not theirs, but I guess it's.
No, it's okay.
Relevant, I think, because if they're expected to be, you know, obviously, they realize the game of, of continuing development down there. Huge part of what they've been spending on this whole time is paying off a debt of property they purchased. That people were interested in purchasing, they don't really wanna pay much money for. Uh, so then it just makes me wonder, what was the value of that purchasing property?
Well, it was those opportunity costs, and we should get pictures of the old property that was there. You know, four, four, forty, forty years ago, the city. The village leaders decided to try to get the industry out of downtown. And there were three primary locations that they wanted to change that. One was where the wellness center. You know, you can see remnants of the old color box property that was on Baker Road right there, back up to those, and it was right next to the school. That was one industrial property that they wanted to get out of downtown. The second is where the Grand United Commons. Property is a baker and grand, it was a pilot factory or a part of that, it was, um. That, it was that bird at one time. That's long since been displaced, been transformed. And the third is this property of thirty forty five broad, we call it thirty forty five broad, what we should call it, is the old Dapco product. It was Dapco before Dapco back in the eighties when we set up the business park. You know, it's funny, we got rid of the industry in downtown and we were successful in keeping them in the community by creating the business park. So they moved, but it was, it was an ice car, a building from the Broad Street side, that old metal airplane light, you knew it. So, but the, the value was an opportunity cost to transform and get that out of there. At least that's how, that's how it was viewed.
In your view?
Well, unfortunately, we bought it and then the market fell.
And then the market. You're right, we have developed with it a saying, um, we can't make numbers work with the, the price of the land. One of the things that, um, I can share with you is M E B C has released a new R A P two point O. I still don't remember what the R A P stands for, redevelopment is something. That was, that was part of the federal, uh, dollars that came out at the beginning of the volume restriction for, for collection as a grant. When that money came out, it was tied to civic group to, um. More distressed communities and ones that were negatively impacted by COVID. We did not have any projects that could have qualified for that original level funding. Well, all of that's run through around now. There is money left over and each state has their own little bucket of it. For Michigan, they reopened it and they expanded it. Who now can be, what types of projects can now be eligible, what types of communities? It still has a component to, for those underserved, um, distressed, um, COVID impacted communities. But they've also opened up, um, other silos for real estate redevelopment. And you can do multiple projects which qualifies what is called a supplement. Our thirty forty five Broad Street project hits every single goal objective of this funding program. And we're probably one of many, it's gonna be competitive, great. However. The developer knows about this. Because we, I make sure he got it, participated in the webinar yesterday. He, those funds can be used in tandem with other funds that they are getting. Round thing redevelopment, the M E B C C R P program, they can all overlap. Um, and you can use this funding too. And because they have the potential to get this funding for this project. There doesn't need to be the concern about, oh, they gotta pay one point two four, two, three million with tap fees. Or, oh, it's one point two million to pay back our land. That gap can be wiped out by these, by this, uh, this funding.
I just pulled up the website, uh. And, yeah, it seemed like you could bet based on my quick view. Who would be applying, the developer would be applying or?
Well, that's for the city or. It can be the city or it can be the developer or we can go in joint with.
But it didn't work. I mean. I have grand news and things and they don't always, but, but, like, same day calendar, but. And, you know, the D A could. If they ever had excess dollars, the easy projects to me would be very likely to buy. And if you, if you couldn't come up with a project, just go to D T and say, I wanna put that hole, that hole, and that hole underground. And it'd be a benefit, long-term benefit, because if they can't do it. They won't do it, I mean.
Right.
You can understand, that's how they're never gonna do it. But, but in our businesses are affected every time we get a windstorm. But, but there's an infinite number of projects with the D A.
Absolutely, and, and that's why you do a plan. It's required by law for the D A to create a plan that identifies what they wanna spend the money on, that's going to be collected. How much money will be collected in that timeframe? And, and. And there's eighteen different questions and the tax increment financing plan that gets put together. Um, and have the goal for that with anybody that.
I mean, chances are, before, I mean, before the, the water bottles run out. Main Street's gonna need to be resurfaced. Because it'll have been twenty years since the last time we did it. You know, there, you could, you could, you could just walk down the street and they could paint light poles, they could. Replace bricks, like, you know, there, there's just an infinite number of stuff that they could spend their money on.
Right, that's, is what I call reinvesting in your downtown. That's what I mean when you talk about it. It could be big projects, it can be routine maintenance, it can be marketing and promotion, the, the. The toolbox for the reinvestment in the downtown is quite.
Well, we, we all drive it now behind H A T D or behind G N C and. Let's next to Jeffers, I'm sorry, I'm gonna get your hand up. You know, we drive it through there now. You go to the bakery, walk through, and, you know, it looks like. But, you know, what you don't see there are power poles. Okay, there used to be power poles all the way from Main Street, across from the fire station, all the way along Jeffers, along the bank that went into downtown. There used to be the old guardrail. Along the Broad Street, remember that, the back, the hardware that, that used to conflict with the trucks going in, the load, all that stuff? I mean, it doesn't look like fancy changes because stuff's underground, but they put a lot of stuff underground and, and. I think, you know, that's why that side of, of the street doesn't lose power. A lot of it, the other side partially tends to, you know.
Because those lines come in through.
Because they get served up there and, you know, but. I ramble.
Does that help to clarify things?
Yes, yeah, I just, yeah, long-term, I don't want the city to be subsidized in the D A. I just, long-term, I don't want the cities to be subsidized in the D A.
You know, there, there's no, there's no obligation.
Well, you wouldn't know that unless they said it, right? So that's why I'm saying it. I'm not accusing anybody else of wanting to do that.
But we have to. We have to.
Right, so I'm just making.
And the D A is aware of it, you know, aware of that, or help of, that they're getting more revenues in. And they're able to take their responsibility back over.
I just hope that money comes to help them with a project because T A Ts and that ain't enough for the property, I just, I don't know.
Well, we don't have to, like, explain for sure, we don't have to worry about.
You know what I mean, that's, that doesn't seem like why. Maybe, I don't know, this is something I need to give answer. I mean, that six hundred thousand we collect. Dexter, and how much is other tax revenue? And it means that the counter. A third of it is extra. We captured twenty one point something, two million.
Twenty three point three one.
Versus fifteen. Versus the, 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 the city tax would be fifteen, right? It would be eleven plus four, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. The difference between twenty three, which is the I S P, half of the I S P or the half of library.
We, we collect library operating, um, Washington County College, half of Washington County. And the city.
So it refers to all of the five three mills. Okay, so it's essentially eight mills. Seven, yeah, around seven, yeah. Okay, seven mills that would capture that, the D A from the way we, that might be going to, correct, we just go back to the other, correct. So roughly a third, so, we, we, roughly a third, yeah, that's fine, I don't have a question.
Sorry, I think we're. No, no, I mean, but, but, whatever anyone's talked about.
I know this is the probably place, but I know in the future, if you do projects, it would be nice if the city and the D A were to utilize the same engineering firm. I know that we did the downtown development many years ago and they brought in a different engineering firm, the same one, Power Block. Yeah, you know, we, we tried to change that, that was the, using back to regular background because. We, 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 we switched that. But, you know, but the D A, the D A is their own. And, and, I mean, that they can hire, they can hire, I'm just saying, they can hire one, they want to do those things. But, but you are, right, it was, it was a great job in our, I live. Great job, so. How did the D A become an extra? Did, did it just, a group of people get together, was it a council that thought, you know what, this would be a great opportunity? You know, to just have, have a D A that can work on, you know, different projects, how did it become, how did it end up with a D A? Remember that?
As far as I can tell, please, if you don't mind me, we can interrupt it. As far as I can tell, it was almost part of a systematic process that, um. Revolved around that whole point, showing when you're taking the industry out of the downtown. But finding a way to maintain a tax base. But the mechanism to then be able to bond and get grants and improve your downtown. So that. Those old, the, the, had to be done through the D A, that was the, that was the legal mechanism. To be able to do that.
Yeah, towns, towns across Michigan, when the D D A Act came out in the, the eighties, late eighties, or was it?
It was the late seventies.
The late seventies, okay.
And most of it started.
When that act came out and allowed cities and villages to set them up. And capture a portion of the taxes that would otherwise be going to those other jurisdictions. There was some controversy for that, because you know, like the library, you're arguing, maybe we'd like to have those funds for the economy. But that, at, at that time, that was a tool. That Michigan put in place for communities to focus dollars to re-vitalize their downtowns.
Sorry, that was what you and Joe were talking about, that there is an amount that otherwise would not come back to our city if we didn't have D D A.
Yeah, and, and, and if we try, you know, we have a big, we have a big boundary, when it was set up in nineteen ninety-four. You know, the boundary goes all the way down Dexter and Arm Road. You know, La Fontaine to Bushes, it goes down Baker all the way to the end of the wellness center. If they ever tried to change that boundary, those other entities can act out. Their legislation has been changed to allow people, and the boundaries changed, they could act out. So, you know, we're, we're either stuck with the boundary as it is. And we get the D D A to invest in projects within the district that can help the community. Or dissolve them, dissolve them.
What do you mean by they're out? What does that mean? They don't answer taxes anymore?
Well, no, so right now, a portion of the library taxes, they don't capture them, they would, they would be getting that. From the D D A district area, but because the, the D D A Act allows us to capture. The library taxes and use them in our progress instead of going to the library.
Just the stuff in the D D A.
And, and i- if we reopen the district, the D D A can say. The library can say, we're out, we, 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 we want those dollars back.
So the thing is, we built thirty forty-five project, it's fifty or sixty million dollars and we built them. Grand Street and it's hundreds of millions of dollars, that is. All that additional taxable value is all above the base, right? So all that money goes into the D D A at that point. Then they get a stupid amount of money and then they can afford to do things like pay for the streets and they're using fire protection. So we get it back some, to some extent.
So how did we ever lose money, ever go to low funding? Cuz when I first got here, that's what they were talking about, I thought they didn't have money for certain things that we were paying for things.
They lived down the recession, your taxable values were down. And we lost Dexter Wellness, which cost us a hundred grand a year.
And, and, and the, the money that the D D A did have went towards. Put towards, towards, towards those, those major bond projects that the, the D D A had done, you know, late, late. Mid, mid, late twenties.
We, we sold bonds in like January or February or two thousand eight. Okay, and, and, and literally within months, the, it went like this. And everybody said, how can we still do these projects? And they're like, well, we sold bonds, we might as well do the project. We, we only had the money, so that's when, that's when I was thinking, well, you have, you know, you have to spend it, right, as we learn a little bit, and you have to spend it. You can't just sit on it. But what that, since it's been spent. We've been in a mode of basically saving as much as we can to make the bond payments. Somebody's gonna come along and make us whole. Right, we're thirty, thirty brother, right? Well, yeah, every time, every time he puts up a building. You know, you step up another level of tax capture.
I mean, when we looked at that stuff the other day, it, it said five hundred thousand was the tax um projected for thirty forty-five project.
Yeah, that's the wrong number.
Yeah. I mean, literally.
That's the same as what we got now.
Right, it's like gonna double the budget. If that were to go in tomorrow, we'd double the budget for the D D A.
Well, it's why, it's why it's important that this board and that board are in sync on what you wanna do with the funding. I maintain that they should be taking the main streets and helping. Take care of those, they should forest grant, whatever's in the district, that should take the burden off our street fund to be able to put money into subdivisions that needed. They should be able to do that now. It's sort of the cat or the chicken today, you gotta get to where the revenue supply to do that. And, you know, we're, we're just starting to climb to where it's. You know, meaningful dollars.
But, but I mean, I, I, I mean, I, I would think also that the D D A doesn't want overproportions before the dollars come in.
Correct.
And those help in, in fact, you know, that situation.
Well, I mean, you've got a mixture of property owners in the D D A, I would say I was playing. There are some that, that. Have been on this board a long time, but not really used to having a lot of debt, I mean, we, we're always very friskfully. Responsible that, uh, get rid of that, and then there's others that want to see. You know, one of these things in town to draw people, you know, like. The ones that have.
So, I mean, because our budget remained a little bit bad for, for most of, we funded outside of, and what, what's listed in. Um, we are budgeting to stop open payments. Um, our, our last actual, I would have said over a hundred percent funded. Um, and we're even better now, since we, since, since we got that, we, we did make the last year's payment. And so we're in an even better position now than the last open actual, so. Um, we're budgeting to, to stop that, that was, you know, ninety thousand dollars in, in the budget. Um, we're gonna be doing a either February or March presidential primary, we don't know which yet, this is excellent to figure that out. Um, but then we're also gonna be prepping for the August and November elections, which will fall in the next fiscal year, not this time one, but the following one. Um, for the winter free trimming program, uh, this year we did Westbridge, uh, next year. Uh, next, we're planning to do, um, the original village area. Um, Westridge was about ten thousand, um, we're asking that's gonna be more for the original village. Um, there's more that needs to be done, um, more trimming and so on and so forth.
These are huge, yeah.
There's, there's, there's a lot. The, we, we, we know what the percentage increases are for the shares off the contracts. Um, but the, the actual dollar figures associated with those increases are, are substantial. Um, you know, this year, point one, point two, we're at about five hundred ninety thousand. And we're gonna be at about six hundred and fifty-ish thousand, uh, exactly, you're in six four, you're in six fifteen. For fire, uh, we're looking at about a twenty-six and a half percent increase from last, if we're here, this, this full year. Um, that's, that's significant. And. From my understanding, not all of the positions. Have been built in the current calendar year. Which means that they're going to complete the, the pairing of the remainder of the positions in twenty twenty-four. And so we will see an additional significant increase in next fiscal year. And then I'm, I'm hoping that maybe it'll stabilize. But, um, yeah, we'll wait to see what, what those budgets look like from.
Primarily staffing related. The increase is definitely.
That's, that's my understanding, and I mean, maybe Johnson, is that better?
Cause you have to increase primarily staff.
Yeah, 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 let's do the actually.
Those are, and they're putting, putting two on shift debt, buncher into on shift debt, that's, I mean, that's.
There's, there's staffing, there's a. They're budgeting for administrative assistant. And those are for firefighters. And some of the other, the fuel costs have gone out, and some, there are some increases associated with other things. But the lion's share of it is in personnel and associated. So do we pay up now this year?
Yes.
We did.
Where is that in the budget? At the back, well, on the.
I think it moved to the front. Yeah, that, that, that is one of the items that, um.
That moved on, I, I saw it over here, it didn't look like a payment.
Oh, yeah, from one, one twenty-three, I have to do stuff.
Yeah, and off I'm seeing these nine. Yeah, I was gonna say, about, about.
Okay, there.
Yeah, I, 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 I mean, we'd be in fact, you know.
Okay, so, so you're, you're not, you're recommended not to do open. Based upon what?
The fact that we're over a hundred percent funded and we're up by the lead fifty thousand this year. Um, beyond the one ninety we've given them.
So where are we getting the actual up though?
We'll do another one after the beginning of the fiscal year, mid, mid-season. Uh, or mid, like a mid-two-year one.
So we could do our, 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 every year, but we're gonna do, it's gonna be mid-year. One, so I can confirm, but. We're, we're really in shape then, you know, so.
Alright, I'm not convinced that's where I'm gonna do it, okay. I can see coming back, I wouldn't say that for zero.
Well, the way, the way I look at it at this point, um. You're what, a hundred and. Isn't that a hundred and fifty percent, something like that?
Still under four.
Under four, um. And that was before we paid a hundred ninety thousand for this this year. And, and also before all of the, before the investment income, so. We would have to see a pretty big market crash, a market drop, I think, either way, two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
And what's the total value of it?
Think you guys got anything to jump on there?
I just would like to see all the data, by and of that.
Everything, and we were right back.
So when would this be tapping into it?
We, uh, we started tapping into it this year. For current retirees. And yes, we did.
We did? Where is that?
Uh, the, the year that went right now.
Is that, how's that revenue flow limit?
So, okay, well, let's go back to the, there's two point one million in there right now. Okay, and then finally, um, so the way it'll work right now is we are coding the health insurance payments to. Um, this fund seven thirty-six, retiree healthcare. And then, um, at the end of the fiscal year, because obviously we want the money to stay in the investment account as long as possible. At the end of this clear, we'll make a transfer to reverse, um, the payments that were made. It was not, it's not a transfer on a revenue side, it's just a transfer from the investment account to our, you know, regular checking account. It's not, not what I made, I know.
So. When we were talking about, uh. Succession planning and stuff, we, we had a laid out that there was a number, we're in the building, a number of people that were. Nine to be retired, so. There was, it's a, you know, here's your balances now, these are your contributions are, and there was a projection. For how much is gonna be paid out each year for the benefits. Um, to the employees over time, so you sort of had a projection out that said, you know, you keep doing your investments at this amount. And then you keep getting a return of this amount, and then you start drawing out this amount. You know, this is what your balance is gonna be, this was a long time ago, when we were, you know, we were at fifty percent or something, we're trying to figure out how much to get. And to catch up, but. I, I think what Sean is talking about and potentially is, if we don't make a contribution this year. The question is, is that gonna impact, you know, if five years from now, that's gonna impact and roll in. Because at that point, we're gonna need those additional funds because the amount of help things are gonna exceed. The income, which is what you, what those actuarial studies that I did at the time are showing.
Well, I mean, that's always possible. Um, but it's also possible that we could increase project around retirees. Um, you know, um, or.
For, 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 for dying.
Or like that, um, or we could change. The benefits that are being offered to retirees, um, there's, there's mechanisms to restructure things, cost savings, that sort of thing.
I can't remember what made it, I don't remember, decided it didn't want that.
No, that was in the last year. Or, well, the year when, ending it right now.
So, that, that last time I remember talking about that was.
We were on, I apologize, we're a hundred and nineteen percent funded. So our net open, um, asset right now is three hundred and forty-eight thousand. So we're three hundred and forty-eight thousand overall, we need to be funded according to the study.
So will that study that we're gonna do this year show some kind of projection or something, and what's expected?
Um, I don't know, um.
Could I ask for?
I'm trying to see if that kind of protection would be, but with the current act, where, there's like a. It's not like sort of a full study, you know, um.
There was a, oh, well, who could have provided that for us, like, I don't remember who it was, but I felt we had one employee that asked about. Not.
About bio.
About bio. And we had like an estimate of what, you know, the life end of this would be, this much, this is how much the bio is.
Yeah, and, and so, 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 so we had asked our, our vendor, for, for that to figure out, about what, what do you think? Current present value is of their, basically lifetime benefits.
Right, so are we saying that on the current lifetime benefits? The amount of the current lifetime benefits were overfunded or were just overfunded on.
This has got to do with investments too, I mean, they've got.
I mean, we, we have experienced some losses, um, over the years, but for the most part, you're very much to the good.
All changed, we've been another two thousand eight places.
Well, at least things, at one point, we were thinking, well, shut up. It was just. It was based on a switch.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I, I think at, at this point, that, that there are a lot of things that. Can, can benefit us, so, you know, we're, we're talking about moving retirees over to a, um. Medicare supplement plan. Or for, for, for those over, over the age of sixty-five, so, so, so those were helpful for Medicare. That ultimately reduces our costs, um, we're talking about retirement high spending. Which means that we're all on our angles for the lifetime benefit, and we would only do that if. If there's a positive value to doing so.
With both sides or just a sale?
Both sides or just considering?
Well, I, I mean, I, you know, that they, they obviously wouldn't, wouldn't accept the buyout. Is, 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 is also beneficial. For both sides, for both sides, yeah, yeah, so, so the, the Medicare supplement plans are less dependent for us. But it's also more complete coverage for retirees over the age of sixty-five.
And it's certainly is portable to other states, which what we have right now is not.
What do you mean by that?
If you decide, you know, you'll move to Florida and you're on our current plan, you're not covered in healthcare for it.
I've got sick in Florida before.
Well, you're not, you're not, you're not over sixty, over sixty-five.
There's your stuff with me forever.
So so that there are other beneficial things, other things that we can do that would benefit that, for very healthcare.
You guys talked about buying up. Um, what are you talking to healthcare?
Yeah, so so do you do doing a lump sum payment for someone to basically forfeit their um repairing healthcare benefits?
Until sixty-five, correct. They should be under there. Isn't that what goes anyway, when you turn sixty-five?
Well, I go so go on that here, but there is a like a Medicare supplement plan. You know, that helps pay and that also puts your bucks.
Which is, yes.
Pretty significant, and our our current coverage covers that, um.
Box.
Those costs, so the retirees are not paying, those sixty-five are not paying.
And I just wanna say it's wrong.
But our our current plan doesn't cover the the general.
No, I think that's correct, yes.
And and that's and 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 then that's that's where the benefit of the Medicare supplement plan is over the current plan we're offering retirees is. And number one loss expense across the bed, it also is more complete coverage for for them.
But the the buyout would be literally dividing the book out and they would get no healthcare coverage unless.
So basically, two thousand eleven close. Cause that's when we stopped paying for.
Correct, yeah.
But I I read the. The budget document where it talks about those complaint about it doesn't say we're gonna draw.
Well, the.
And the goals say we're gonna contribute. What you said we have.
We have, yes.
It doesn't say we're gonna draw.
I I I can't tell you, I mean, I know they weren't budgeted for. And the general plan or any of the other ones. Cause the retirement fee was retired from healthcare.
What wasn't budgeted?
The retired healthcare. So if you go up up a page.
What was that for? I don't know the.
What, I don't know, I think it's insurance now. I might have to go to. Last year. Cause I'm gonna be in this one, but. I'm just going through, here we go, so current eighty-five one on page twenty-one forty-five. Had eighteen thousand eight hundred forty-four and twenty-two. And then there was no budget for twenty-two twenty-three. It's been moved to department two oh nine, but you'll see in two oh nine, it's not even included in there. And it's the same as sort of one of us.
So you're gonna draw eighteen thousand out then?
It's more than that, um.
Well, not much more than that. In one year, it's gonna change over two months. Whatever the increase would be.
So the employee healthcare cost share going into the fund is seventy-seven hundred, and we are, we went in there. Into the whole cut fund.
Does that show those are revenue items or?
Yes, in the fund seven thirty-six, you're not gonna see anyone who's looking at it right now. And the budget out quarter is a hundred and fifty thousand.
I'm not gonna see you one of those though.
Well, you will, but not in one one.
Is the seventy-seven hundred the total cost of all those?
Yeah. And you gotta remember though, a lot of our current retirees don't have a question component. There's only three that do. So those will, you know, obviously increase over time. Or if not, if we, you know, if I can. Probably structure.
Um, so now. Not many significant changes in software or um part-time. Um, versus is gonna continue going up, I did provide a spreadsheet um showing. Where our projections look like. Uh, eight forty-four, forty-five, and uh what that looks like from from each fund. And, you know, starting in twenty twenty-nine, our our cost drop off significantly as as we. Um, as our funding percentages go up. Um, we.
I have a question about fair go and then transparency, um. Feature of it and of other. Steps towards implementing that or how that's going or?
So it's why I I believe a version of of the transparency feature is live. And and we can, we can share that, um, we're still working on implementing the the budget feature. And I think the C I P feature.
Uh, when you like as a live on the website?
And 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 I have to look and. I don't know if we um add a link from the homepage directly. But we can.
I can follow.
We can, we can do that.
Did you get the first stuff from Doug?
Uh, the first one came out of um the D A F E spending plan. Um, on contributions, um, we've, uh, you know, Julie Roberts came in and spoke helpful. Uh, they they have requested an increase from seventy-two thousand to eighty-five thousand six hundred and eighty. So about a thirteen thousand, fourteen thousand dollar increase. Uh, page six to forty-five. And then um I was gonna bring up um the letter that we received from the senior center. Um, it was on the table this evening, asking for forty-five thousand. Um, last night I heard from Gordon, it was gonna be about thirty. Um, and so I I did build thirty into the existing budget, um, so it has. Be curious to know how this spots on thirty versus forty-five. I think last year early, I think our current year budget, this is year twenty-two, twenty-three, um. We had sixteen thousand built in. It's sixteen thousand five hundred. Um, so it's almost three, three times the the ask.
Probably not the only people that ask for money, correct?
So um I I in the email from Gordon, he indicated that Webster County had um had agreed to forty thousand. So that is.
What if it back?
So you used to have a contribution, which was in the back. And there's, it is.
I see contributions away.
Yeah, so that that's that that is where it. Page twenty-one forty-five.
So right now, overall, you're showing. A.
Uh, twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand three hundred dollars, okay.
So, yeah, page twenty-two or forty-five.
Yeah. And then going after. Funds for eight hundred dollars.
That's that's understanding, they 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 submitted an application to, um, um. The the federal government for basically federal appropriations.
And then they know where they got that, where they spent that?
I I I think I think their their goal with that application was to purchase the Walrus Center.
I mean, I think I'm finding increasing, I mean, that's a good, for personal opinion of them. Um, it would be nice to see what the total membership is and what the distribution is across the townships to see whether or not it's proportionate. I mean, I see that Webster is giving forty thousand and forty-five residents versus our one hundred and ten um residents to our members, so. I mean, the the numbers seems more than, um. Proportionate, I guess, I just would be curious to see though. I think we've seen that other times from.
There's gonna be some side of township people that are.
I'm thinking stop, D O, Dexter Township, Township, or completely line on.
Right.
Have they asked? Yeah.
I think in years past, it was only the three R, like Dexter, Webster, and City of Dexter, Haven, I don't know.
I don't, I I.
I don't remember.
So either.
What are the chances that we're gonna actually do? Is is the, well, no. What is, what is the two hundred and thirty-five? Is that just the answer you can tell?
It is.
Okay. And twenty-four point five. And you don't, you don't have any there for that, correct?
Um, but I mean, you know, we we contributed significantly to our federal fund. Fund balance. Yeah, and so I I think there there's a case we may do to dip in, to dip into fund balance to to do a priori. What 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 do you wanna do those? But what I wanna put those in here, I just wanna. I wanna make it obvious that that's that's the cause of of dipping dipping that fund that's for. Plug it into different of my.
Does it, does it blank when you do the project, that's where it's gonna come from?
Yeah.
I'm just saying, I would give a number there.
Okay. Um, cause I mean, really, there's two two major parts of private maintenance, one is, one is, and the other is the. Uh, Dexter, Chelsea, and I didn't. And so, yeah, I'm I'm more than happy to add to what numbers in. Into those, into those lines, it it will, it will show a.
Either just for design or something. You know, design only, so, well.
Can I ask a question about the general code ordinances, recalcitation?
Yeah.
Or not, couple I sound where it's work. Uh, so we just did the reworking of the zoning ordinance, is. Is that just, is this four thousand just like a legal thing that needs to be done? Like, did we talk about like a careful revision of our general code following the zoning ordinance update, I thought that was. Brought us like a re- a review of that.
So so sorry, what 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 looking?
Sorry, I might have to stick. The general code ordinances recalcitation, the city court department four thousand dollars under the discretionary expenses. That would be like, um.
So 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 they.
I'm sure it's gonna have to be done.
Yeah, so 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 their their term order is recalcitation, it's basically a. Recompilation, just adding in the order to set up change and.
Yeah, so then I guess my follow-up was, I I seem to remember during our discussion of. The the reworking, a review of the zoning ordinance, we talked about doing something similar for the general code. I don't know when that was. Master plan coming.
The, so so I I I have, I have talked about do doing kind of something similar for um the general code. I I think, um. We probably want to tackle the retro inspection ordinance and um everything is opening with that first. Um, because that 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 will have a significant impact on on. Several sections in the in the general code. I I would, I would think that after that would be a good time to. E- e- either tackle the whole document that is the general code ordinance is, or kind of start with, you know. We'll go section one to ten this year. Ten to twenty next year, so and so, to make our way back through that.
And the, the. Of the rental inspection.
The the rental inspection ordinance.
Yeah. I'm sorry, just what is the status of the right, we might be waiting on before we review the general code.
So the um, um, our interim is going through the our general code to see what items we have. Um, make time for for, um, we do potentially do what we do. With the international coverage maintenance code, um, it's. As this material required, um, um, I'm just, I haven't started it, but, um. Um, and Justin and I talked recently, and it's something that I need to sit down with Bryce and the interim. Sort of give them the um, the direction on what to look for in the international property maintenance code. Um, and start to develop an outline for what we, what things we want. To be. Enforcing as far as property maintenance. In our rental inspection program, um, so it's, it's, it's worth the price.
It's part of that, I think, working from an existing ordinance that. From a nearby municipality at all, or I mean, are you really?
It's not, um, um, I have like picked an ordinance, I try to stay away from picking someone else's. And making it work for us, because I don't, I don't know what the context was for theirs, so I'm starting. I'm starting from the standpoint of let's look at the property maintenance codes, what are the things that we know we want to, um. The things we think we want to be enforcing, um, um. And then look at how others have taken these from processing. They implemented.
Um, so continuing on page six, um. I mean, that that is, you know, one of the next items, um. There's money in buildings and grounds for um, but just continuing work here at the effective team. Um, including doing additional audio and video, um, work in the council chamber. Um, electronic ad entry for additional security, um, the moving chairs, like we talked about. Um, doing an exterior monument sign, um, we have a a price for that, it's about two thousand. Um, and then uh, still going the the purple. Um. We included a little bit for additional um improvements of barn. And we know that we need to um fix the the roof of one record.
I have a question, do any of the barn improvements? Depend on whether or not it's going to be temporary facility for fire?
No.
Or they think that would need to be done or.
I I think it's all things that that would need to be done, so I I need, you know, just looking at it right now. Um, a lot of of what we're gonna be trying to do between now and and June thirty, does the exterior stop? Um, the cleaning, painting, replacing the doors, replacing the windows, uh, but then there are. Uh but the there there is some internal stuff too. Um the floor and the 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 actual wood that makes up the second floor, there's some pretty big holes and gaps in it. Um that, you know, I didn't have anybody go up there and say, make sure you watch your step. Um so it's 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 stuff like that that will need to work on in the next.
I have a change into a question about parking. Obviously, it was pretty crowded here on Monday night. I don't know if we have obvious places for parking. I think people ended up on the street. Is there an obvious place to drive people like a lot to go, like nearby and like public or not?
So and we 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 do we do have property outside of the least arctic plant that people could park. Um I I don't know how public the kind of gravel lot next to Alpha Metal is. Um I I think people park in there, but I I don't know if that that is.
Alpha Metal, that's that's.
That's Alpha Metal.
We used to have a pretty good relationship with that. You probably have Tim or Andrea or somebody called him.
Yeah, we 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 were really good with you. Um but I I I don't know that we necessarily want to direct somewhere as a public uh program, right property, if if we can avoid that.
Yeah, but there's nowhere.
I mean, that situation, I mean, if we are anticipating a progress like that, I know they'd have to park it somewhere else. Right, just one, I was not really expecting it. Two, I wasn't sure where to go. I mean, I didn't find a spot, but.
Yeah. But but yeah, we we so so, you know, if you take your own now and um the property outside of the least arctic plant is our property, that people can park that.
Why is that idea that if we can park there, at least that reviews one of room between several others?
If we read W S K or if we drive us down.
Right, can I shout out everybody?
There we go. So we we can talk about the national property maintenance code and um rental inspection. Um we added in money uh to some ADA projects in the parks for the ADA presentation we saw from um uh O H M, so yeah, O H O H M.
And how is most of that fixing the parking and access from parking?
The the the, that's part of it. Um a lot of the benches like don't have companion seating and.
So that would be part of that.
Correct. Yeah, and then like um a lot of the benches are right on the sidewalk. And so, you know, you have to get off of the sidewalk to, you know, go to a bench that doesn't have like companions and so it'd be making some of those those small obvious improvements that that they recommended. Um the branchy trail connector is on parks. And then um we have money in here for the bicentennial uh celebration.
I have a question about. So obviously, the bulk of it isn't just two white owners. And you know, I love theater. I talk about it all the time. But that seems like a lot of money for bike passengers. So if that's really what they're gonna spend on it, how, I mean, where are they planning on locating this? And is it gonna be free and accessible to the public?
So so that we 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 have told them that, you know, if if there is money going to be going towards that, that it does need to be free and accessible to the public. Um right now, they they have talked about doing it at Gordon Hall.
Okay.
Um but I've asked them to take a look at, is there a way, is there a way to do it downtown, like, like have it in the gazebo? Rather than out at Gordon Hall, which is not in the city.
Okay, and if they did do that in the gazebo, what exactly is two thousand dollars going toward?
So um we are paying for 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 the performance.
Right.
Um but, you know, they have a, you know, a professional, you know, nearbound writer, professional nearbound um director and professional actors, actresses.
So we're paying for the state or do you call it?
So Sam, we can talk about this later, but I have a lot of issues with all.
Yeah, I don't think so for the full performance of the whole thing. It is the the what it is a part part of bicentennial is there oh, there's a theater term for it, when they basically go through the script. Um and that's what it is.
About my whole brief, oh, but.
Thank you. Um so that's what is happening at Gordon Hall um during the Sundays of bicentennial celebration the last day.
This kind of knowledge is just for state reading?
I believe that's it.
That's insane.
That's it's part of the.
That's totally insane.
If that's part of the bicentennial, that's what it is going to be.
Okay, well, we can talk more offline about that because like that's completely unnecessary. I mean, you can do a state reading for free. I've done plenty of them.
Let's talk. Yeah. Um but in terms of like what it is and why is it Gordon Hall, it's that that is gonna be part of the whole day picnic that is the basically starts with that and then it's the whole day picnic or afternoon picnic and then it ends with the closing ceremony for the bicentennial celebration.
We'll talk later.
Do we have repairs to the salt shed?
Uh I believe that there there is additional, there there is a bit of money in four four one.
That's our money. It says salt shed wall. That the?
Yeah. Yeah, that's it.
That's the twenty thousand?
Correct. Well, and so so the the twenty thousand is for salt shed wall and.
I know.
Treating treating that that type of your floors.
Well, okay. What do we use the thirty thousand on today for this year?
Uh so so part 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 of that was was gonna go towards towards the bottom.
Towards the barn or the salt shed?
Towards the bottom.
This part? For thirty thousand that was spending in this crater?
Correct.
You've got that that, so that's, so that's in addition to.
So the 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 thirty is in is in the current fiscal year. And the and the twenty is is the next fiscal year. And I think I may have put the.
Then you got ten for bill ten and there's one of my.
In two six five.
So we've got barns spread across all all the grounds?
Correct.
Why would we have it in one spot?
I I can put it all in one spot.
I'm just asking, there's, yeah, trying to understand the logic.
Yes, Cindy, do you have a estimate for the barn net?
For 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 the barn, for the salt shed?
Salt shed.
Uh I have not done a word.
So yeah, I know it says, well, we're on twenty dollars outside for that.
For for the salt shed and for treating the the inside floors.
So thinking of the floors of your own, the box has four around eight thousand dollars.
Yeah.
I wouldn't get the salt shed on me.
But I mean, I I I think the priority would be the salt shed.
Absolutely, I agree with that.
So Maria, you said that there's in a different font, when can we see seven thirty six?
It will, I mean, it will, that would be included for the next budget session.
Okay. Because you you got through the the, that's right?
Yeah, yeah.
Anybody have methods or other questions that are related to this or? We're gonna have to drag it on longer than it should be.
I have a thought.
Okay.
That had occurred to me and I was interviewing and we were thinking about the doing a new study to see what is the potential possibilities or cost or whatnot of having a community um electricity. Um another thing that occurred to me um is uh the community, public communication, like internet mainly. Um and that came to me because of um Coldwater, Michigan, and they have a community internet that is very affordable and it there. Um so I haven't really, I tried to reach out to Coldwater, but I haven't been able to connect with them yet um to really have that see what are the possibilities. But I do remember when we all had to start working from home. Um there were a lot, a lot of residents that um had issues getting their internet going or in an affordable way. Um and Coldwater seems to have a good thing going. Um might be worth, there is interest to look into that possibility for us here, at least see what what are the things around it, right? I I really don't know what what are the what are the parameters around it or the needs or the assessments or any of that, but it might be something that's worth looking into.
I have seen some comments, people noticing the five G tower going up and and noticing improvements, maybe there's there's I don't know if you've heard anything more about the five G tower, getting feedback about it. Did they end up changing what it looks like? The exterior of the tower, the five G tower, whatever that is, that one of my parents teaching.
I I'm not trying to use any.
It looks different than I remembered it was going.
Yeah, they did. When they, when somebody, whenever they installed it, I think it was probably U V Shell, so that they did change it because it was definitely not exactly what we had seen or asked.
More of it is the same, the color, the green.
The color different. I know it's something, I'm like.
Yeah, it actually, I find it seems to blend in more than it was.
Right, yeah.
I don't think it's worked again, right? They just got one of the.
Oh, they love it.
I don't know if that's two ago, they got the place to ground. Well, that that's what they did last week, I think, as far as looking, I think, I don't think that's what we got, so.
Yeah, you have a placebo effect, I'm sorry, must be a placebo effect.
Yeah.
I won't, no idea.
I mean, now I see water towers everywhere I go, but I have I know.
Oh my God, I know he's right there. They would have been trying to install it on wires, so.
He might do the same. So we're all took to the goals and objectives back in the future. Then I was hoping to tell you that, I was like, I see a strange the goal until we've done a reassessment. Set up for discovery of the owner who's available. Well, it sounds like we don't make the payments in one year. Is that true?
Yeah.
We can decide after the.
I mean, if if we wanna make a a budget of mathematics um to do that now, we can we can, we can pull the trigger on that mid year actuarial now.
Well, I'm sure we're getting out of the actuarial, what we're looking for.
We were a hundred and fifteen percent funded for the one that was done as of six thirty twenty one, twenty two, six thirty twenty two, we were a hundred and sixteen percent funded. And we put in an additional, I I misquote, it wasn't one or one, wasn't one ninety, it was one nineteen. Um
Yeah, that's what you should.
Into it. Plus, interesting.
I don't think that that kind of studies that tough. I mean, my network manager do it all the time, right? He's a huge tireman account, do you amount of car roll analysis, actually, there's a ninety percent chance of making it here or whatever the number is. It shouldn't be that tough.
No, I mean.
No, I we we just have to, I mean, we just have to check. It's not very hard.
Yeah, it's it's a tiny thing. And we, the the visit we approved last year for the actuarial actually included a price for this. So we wouldn't have to go up for bid or anything like that. We just tell them, we want this done. You know, because usually we do it as a six thirty of the previous year, that's why only we would wait, but I mean, I'm gonna ask them, can you go ahead and reject this out based on what you think we're gonna be at six thirty? I mean, that's not a problem.
Okay, well, not taking the vision, but.
I would comment about the first goal, about um the tax rate or the objective under the first goal. So formerly it was the lowest one third and then it's lower than average. Um that is because, why?
So this is a really difficult goal to administer because the information that's available out there is different depending on what county you're in. So for example, Washoe County breaks up on their um this coming portion of report. On their portion of the report, they break it up by the different types of villages. So I can actually see, you know, what is operating, what is desk, you know, what is fire service? Whereas like Wayne County, for example, they just give you like you have a military, you're military, or just military, but they don't tell me what it is. They'll say like operating voted. Well, what is the voted? Is it that? Is it? I don't know. Oakland County just gives you, you know, it doesn't tell me what's in it. So um so it's it's really, I I've been struggling with this particular one, trying to figure out a way where we can still meet the goal. I mean, the the original goal was to be critically responsible with the military and help taxpayers. But yes, that's enough to make, you know, to be competitive. Um and I haven't struggled on a way to measure that with the information that's available out there.
So I'm really thinking too, so we have that one, thanks to the certification, so Southeast Michigan and then also with specific to Washington County. I mean, I I guess that my opinion would be that the relative to Washington County is what would be more meaningful, I guess, is when people are looking to locate or, you know, you're so integrated. Definitely type of county. Um so I think it's more compelling what we have indicated for the county as opposed to the falls out in Michigan. Um I mean, even if you favor, I guess, of getting rid of that, if it's something that's difficult to measure and or obtain, that's the least relevant one to me, I guess. Um but then I guess something I apparently haven't noticed in the past is it's the original, is that we say average? I would be inclined, because, you know, so previously said one third, so that's more like percentile type comparison where averages, your average can be you know, not certainly fifty percentile, and you've got outliers on top.
Um and average, quite frankly, isn't issue of Washington County because its language is not.
Right, right. So I don't know if we who people like, like average and they're thinking it means fiftieth percentile, and we change that language to fiftieth percentile, or just something that actually it is consistent regardless of what the distribution is.
Yeah.
That's what can happen.
Absolutely. So with like, maybe the Washoe County or something.
Yeah, you say media, I mean, median is fifty percentile.
Right.
Yeah.
About Washington.
For Washington County, yeah. I mean, I I could be fine getting rid of the Southeast Michigan one, um and just changing it.
Well, we're probably gonna be higher than that range with the fire launch.
Well, that's why I took out that.
Right.
That and library utility, because there are, there are communities, you know, like that have that pay for libraries and, you know.
Yeah, there there there's, you know, mobile in a way that, but then when you say debt of that, is that like a voted debt?
Okay. Because basically, we're we're really, I I think what we're looking for is operating others, you know, not special voted things. And yes, a little bit of, yeah, you know, they're going to.
I mean, even if that's something we can achieve in a given year because of some exciting circumstance, I would rather the objective, remain the objective to clarify that, look, this is our goal, but there's something extraordinary happening for this period of time. Um otherwise.